All right, well, I I'm just volunteering for the moment. As you guys know, Kim is out and Arnie, our vice is out. So there's no chair or vice chair. So I guess we're advising somebody volunteer until we can elect a chair pro temp. So at this point, I would accept nominations for somebody to act tonight as chair pro temp.
I nominate Adrian Delion for the chair this evening.
A second.
Any other nominations? Would you accept the assignment?
I'm okay with that.
All those in favor? Aye. Have you opposed? All right, this is great.
All right, it's been a minute. Okay, so first order of business is.
Can I make one amendment to the agenda? Or can?
What do we, what do we, uh?
What do we amend it?
Terry Harris will be filling in for Harvard.
Okay.
I know that we approved tonight's agenda with the stated corrections.
So. Thank you, David. Thank you. Hang on, get my stuff right here. Just the. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So that passes. Um, let's see. And next up is the consent agenda. Your motion for that?
Yeah, I hope that we approve tonight's consent agenda.
Here's a second. Oh, gotta be you. Uh, discussion on the consent agenda? So all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes as well. And let's see, we're just flying right along here. All right. And then do we have anyone signed up for public input?
We do not.
Okay. Uh, so then moving on, let's see, next up would be our high school update. I do not see this handbook here. And then. After that would be a chat GPT demonstration from Kevin Welby.
Oh, Kevin's online.
I see, I see him online, usually starts our meeting.
Good afternoon. You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. So I guess first and foremost. Have you guys heard about chat GPT?
And yeah, it looks like most of us have.
Yeah. Let's see here, I'm gonna try sharing my screen. Hopefully. Let me go to another tab here. So, yeah, and GPT is a kind of the big word right now. Everybody is talking about it. It's taken, uh. Taken. Only a few months to gain a major popularity. And so this slideshow here that's up on the screen right now. Chat GPT made. Um, I gave it a simple question. I said, you know, I need to get a five minute or less presentation to K-12 school board about chat GPT. And it threw out a response with five, five key points and I'm just gonna go over these real quick with you because it it's a pretty good slide it put together here. So basically, you know, it's a state of the art AI language. The one that's open to everyone right now from OpenAI, the company that is doing the specific one chat GPT. They're on version three, five right now. That's open to the public, but you can actually pay twenty dollars a month for their premium version, which is four point oh. And so, anywho, this, this is like some of the benefits of, you know, using chat GPT. Um, and then kind of talks about. What, what it can do. How could it be used in education? And so this is a pretty good where it says you know, you can integrate it into learning management and work with it and support you and be creative with tutorials and simulations and facilitate, you know, tutoring and mentoring and stuff. And that's very true. Challenges, there will be challenges, obviously. As with anything. And, um, you know, it's funny, it ends on how could the school board support it, you know? But what I wanted to do is give an actual. Let's see here. Chat GPT is not a search engine. But Bing has integrated it into their search engine and does kind of being deployed out slowly. But it's, you can ask it questions and be more, you know, not, not searching for a question, but actually give it, you know, dialogue back and forth. And so I don't know how well this comes across on your screen, but I asked it, you know, I have, you know, want to give a five minute presentation and this is what it spit out and you can have a dialogue back and forth with it and say, well, you know, I said, hey, is Microsoft using chat GPT? And then, you know, spit out this result. That yes, you know, it is. And what other companies are using chat GPT? And so you can have a dialogue back and forth with chat GPT. And, um, get pretty good results. Now, these results with three dot five are still limited to pre, I believe, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty. It's not live. Now Bing's chat is current live, so anything that's on the internet and um, previous, it's able to use for when you're asking it questions. It's a very, very powerful. It will be very great for education. Uh, but it obviously has some, you know, potentials for being used for bad, obviously, as, as anything. Um, Google Classroom and Google, our Google Workspace is working with education and part of our platform will, they're working on uh, being able to detect AI kind of, kind of a results and, you know, um, so you're able to put work into the Google Classroom and it is going to help our teachers, you know, to the best of its ability. And it's funny because they're using AI to address it, to find out if it was created by AI. But I think it has a great potential and it's not going anywhere. Uh, it's, it's here to stay and it's, I think, has a potential for great and great uses, um, for students and, uh, teachers, for sure. Um, so I don't know if anybody wants, uh, has like any question they would like to answer it to kind of see what kind of results it gives you, or if has anybody actually had a chance to kind of look at it or?
Questions for Kevin? Have we read into any instances where students are using this to try and get out of doing their own work?
Well.
Down so far?
Um, currently, my understanding is, and I, I don't know, I believe it was turned off at the high school level. I'm not sure if it was turned off for district wide per administration request until there was, I think, a little more understanding of it and having some, you know, policies or procedures or, you know, some ways to where they can detect it. So it's not necessarily a hundred percent blocked because the, like I said, um, this is OpenAI Chat GPT, but there's a bunch of others using it. Um, one thing about this particular one that's up on the screen is signing up for this and using it. Uh, the kids would technically be breaking the, uh, user agreement. You have to be eighteen years or older to use this technically. Not that that's gonna stop anyone from using it. But, yeah. Um, so that, but our staff, you know, I think it will be good for our staff to be able to work with it and use it and definitely get some experience with it before, you know, um, all the kids are using it. Cause right now I don't believe there's a whole lot of tools available yet to be able to kind of combat, you know, whether or not they use it because as an example, we, uh, just for fun in ours, and I didn't talk to Arnie about this, but, uh, we asked, asked it to create a essay. And we asked it to create the essay in the form of Arnie, uh, as if Arnie Roblin wrote it. And it, of course, you know, he's a public figure and they were able to find information and reports that he had, you know, written and things he had speeches he's given. It wrote an essay for us that was pretty darn good. And then we said, well, change it in the form of a fifth grader. And it did, it changed, changed the whole essay around. And now I need it to be shorter, you know, and it's kind of, kind of amazing, but also, you know, scary at the same time. It's like, okay, well, how, how, how do I know that an AI generated that report or not? And so the, there are tools coming and there are tools in the works for that and so it is interesting. It is very, very, um, uh, like a lot of them say, this is the worst of it and it's only gonna get better. You know, this is version one, you know, basically that they've released to the public.
So I just want to add a couple of things. To me, since I've been around education long enough, this is reminiscent when they introduced the graphing calculators back in the nineties, um, and the calculator wars that went on within math instruction. So I see this as similar, like this is a tool that's here to stay, as Kevin pointed out. The question is for the education arena, how are we going to embrace this tool? And so, um, we've been talking at cabinet level, you know, having a, a technology work group really look into this, working with staff, so reaching out to um, both CBEA and OSEA, having a staff work on kind of the guidelines and parameters around the use of AI, this use, because again, chat GPT, you have to be eighteen and above. So obviously we can't, you know, unleash it on our students. But if they incorporate this technology into the Google Classroom, which we do use, what are our parameters? What are our digital citizenship parameters? What skill, knowledge and skills do we need to teach our students about ethical use of this? It's just like any other tool. Um, we just need to be prepared and we could probably put it in chat GPT. What are the digital citizenships and ethical guidelines?
Yeah.
Um, so we definitely need staff input to be monitoring this. What kind of, um, detection software do we need? Like, how do we keep up with this technology and use it to optimize learning for our students as a tool? But at the same time, make sure that students are still learning how to write. Make sure that students are still learning how to do research and use critical thinking skills. And these really important elements that we have to make sure students are still learning and, um, not just having a computer generate, do all their thing, thinking and writing for them. So I'm hoping next year, we're gonna have a staff work group come up with some guidelines and recommendations and, and what kind of trainings do we need to offer staff? What kind of trainings? Um, professional learning do we need to have? So I asked Kevin to do this presentation to let you know that this is seismic. This will have tremendous implications. You can type in here, like, write IEP goals for a student with, you know, this disability. You can do things like write a lesson plan for a seventh grade student on, I don't know, the teapot dope scandal or whatever topic, and it will generate a lesson plan for you. Like, it's just, the use of this is incredible. Write a letter to parents about, um, uh, chronic absenteeism. Like, there's so many uses for us to make us do our jobs more efficiently. Um, but we just have to do it thoughtfully and, and make sure we're providing the right training, the right um, guidelines to make sure that it's being used in a productive and not a destructive, harmful way.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it really is a great, great tool. And I could see, excuse me, so many of our staff, you know, teachers and stuff being able to utilize this for, like, you know, Kara said, you know, I mean, it, it could help you with so much day-to-day activities and really reduce it. I mean, it, it really is quite amazing. Um, and we just need to embrace it and, um, try to, you know, get proper, uh, training for it and resources.
So Kevin, I kind of see it as intelligence and counterintelligence, right? Um, how is the counterintelligence? How is the ability to identify when the product is used on par with the product itself?
Yeah.
Is that all just, I mean, because it, it's the rat race, you know, it's, it's
It is.
One or the other, the other.
Well, and it, it's quite interesting because Microsoft has been working with OpenAI in the background for quite a long time. This is nothing new. And, um, so Microsoft kind of has a one-up on it. And what's really funny is it really kind of brought some, uh, people out of retirement at Google because they're, they're kind of scrambling now to catch up to what OpenAI and Microsoft have. And it really kind of rattled some cages and woke some people up. And so, you know, Google obviously saw this as like, well, it's not only competition to them because they didn't have this. So now they're coming up with their own product. But now they, all these companies have to come up with products to identify this. Um, and so Google is working to create the, somehow, you know, using AI themselves to detect the use of AI on reports and such. And so there, I, I could see in the next few years, you're gonna have tons of other companies using, you know, third-party, you know, utilities and stuff for teachers to be able to detect, you know, um, work that may have been plagiarized or, you know, you know, copying and pasted right from chat GPT or something similar to it. And so there will always be a constant, you know, it, it's, it'll be, uh, it'll be interesting to see what happens, but they are working on it. And I'm happy to say that our district, uh, we're already licensed for the Google Premium package that will include that. So we're gonna have the tools available for our staff to, to be able to help, help with that at least.
Yeah, I think a lot of that's gonna be, uh, like Kara said, when the graphing calculators came out, sort of adjusting how education is done so that you're using it as a tool, not as a chief for your assignments.
Yeah, for sure.
All right. Any other questions for Kevin? All right. Thank you. That was very interesting.
Yeah.
Some problem in the future.
Thanks, Kevin.
Um, let's see. All right. Next up, we have, uh, Future Chef's presentation with Jenny Wade. Welcome.
And this one is just not a timer. If it didn't click through, so tell me when you want me to fire it up.
Just go ahead. I'm gonna just let them watch it and then I'll explain everything.
Okay. One second. I need to share from here first. Just realized it wasn't on my screen. What? Technical difficulty.
Chat GPT, how to share your screen.
She saw an interesting project.
I want just, just for writing, um, different things. I would be happy with that. I don't have to think as much.
That's an interesting project. It was an image capture device. It'd actually take a picture of something, send it to an AI, which would convert it to a text description, and then send that description to a different AI and draw a picture. So you get somewhat of a picture of what you're looking at.
Okay.
All right. So I'm not sure if many of you are aware of Future Chef. It is a program that Sodexo started about twelve years ago. Um, and it's all about encouraging students and young people to make better health and healthier choices in their food. Each year, each contestant. Um, sorry, excuse me, I hate talking in front of people. So again, the idea behind this is to teach students to choose better choices. Um, this year, the, um, theme was favorite fruit or veggie side dish. So we had, um, they, uh, the recipe that won, which is tiny apple balls. That was Charlotte Ardall. She did a phenomenal job. Her presentation, her table decorations, all of it. She was just phenomenal, above, above and beyond. Um, we have Rice Delight, Paisley Van Hoop is the one who did that. Very, very good. If you guys want recipes, I got them in my office. I'll share. They're worth making. Um, and then Priya, she presented strawberry cheesecake bites. They were really good, too. And the parsnip fries. Everyone should try those. I was not a fan. I didn't think it'd be good, but once I tasted it, I'm like, this is actually really tasty. So the choices, they, they really chose a broad spectrum of things to use. Um, each contestant, as you saw, had a special person with them. They did not help prepare the meal at all. They were there only for safety reasons, making sure that they had their hands washed, their gloves on. PPE wear, you know, cut gloves if they had to use a knife, um, eye wear, they anything that could splash up in the eye. So that's, that's all they were doing. This is completely done by the student. Um, we weren't able to get board members because y'all were busy that night. So I went out into the community and, um, I was able to grab Casey McCord from the high school, but Amy, the lady that owns the Sweetheart Waffle Truck. And Donna Kosky, who is the bakery manager at Fred Myers, were judges. And because Donna had such a great time and she wonderful time, Fred Myers has now graciously offered to cover all the food items for next year's, um, con- contest. So, which is really nice because it gets kind of spendy after a while. Um, and this is the first time that Lighthouse has asked to be able to join. Um, they were never, never wanted to be a part of it before. Now they actually have a TF3 teacher that is willing to put in the effort and get their students involved as well. So, um, just on a side note, Charlotte did move on to the regionals. We should know by the end of April if she is chosen. It is, the region is California, Oregon, Washington, Montana, and Idaho. So it's a big region. A lot of recipes. Um, we're hoping that she moves on and then it will go to a national level. And I think that's about, that's about it. As soon as we know if she's moved on or not, we will let, um, David know so he can post it for everyone. So, um, next year, we're hoping to grow double the, um, competition and I hope to see somebody be there to help judge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anyone have any questions or anything?
Um, how many students participated?
We only have four. Um, we had one administrator that was out, um, a fifth grade team member that helps organize this was out with COVID. Um, so we had a hard time coordinating, getting recipes in. So we only had four this time. Hopefully, like I said, I want at least eight or ten next year. So, and with the addition of Lighthouse wanting to participate, we should be able to meet that.
How's it at the regional level?
Regional level, um, like I said, it's Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Montana, California. Um, no, they're, they're, they have been inputted into the portal. Um, the web portal and the recipes are chosen from that. The pictures, we, we had to send a background pictures, photos, um, the whole nine arts for this. And then those are chosen in the regional area. And then national level, yeah, if she's chosen to go to national, she will actually go to, um, the East Coast and actually prepare her meal in front of everyone. And it's televised, so.
So I'm so sorry I couldn't attend. I had a conflict. I have judged in the past. Love it. These kids are so talented. It's so fun. And I love being a judge because, man, that food is good. I recommend it.
It's really, it was really, really nice to see the kids being able to do that. We had planned on doing it in twenty twenty. Um, we were scheduled to do it, the week after we had to close. So, and that was actually the tenth anniversary. So I will tell you this year, the kids got a lot because I had all that stuff from twenty twenty. So I was able to incorporate, everyone went home with something this time. No one went home empty-handed and little Gina, um, got, was invited because she was disappointed. She was in fourth place. Um, and she was disappointed. And so sweetheart, like I said, Amy from Sweetheart Waffle actually invited her to come and work a day in her waffle truck. As a chef, she was a part of cooking the waffles, building, you know, items and stuff like that because she really wants to be a cook. So, or a chef. So it was really nice to have that kind of input from the community as well. And like I said, Fred Myers is super excited to help at, at the community level next year as well. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sounds like it was a lot of fun.
It was.
Okay. Uh, next up, we have our featured school for the meeting, and that's Madison. It's Plainsworth.
You really wish I would have had chat GPT make my slush.
Maybe you did.
To the party on that one. Um, well, thank you so much for having me. And as much as I adore speaking in public, I'm actually an adult. Um, I am very excited to be here and to share with you some of the amazing things that are happening um, at Madison. The school year started, like, I think probably every year has started for the past two school years when we've moved to school. It was pretty busy and chaotic. And there was maybe a moment where I, I think one of my first conversations with Kara was like, I'm gonna need you to come out here and walk through this and like, see the amount of boxes that were piled up in the hall. It was like, school start. Parents are going to be here in a week. Um, but no, it was, it wasn't mad dash to the start. Anyone who is here that works at Madison, um, knows that, but really thankful for the maintenance department and the custodial, um, crews from throughout the district, along with the entire staff. They, everyone really like pitched in and worked so hard um, to make sure that the school is ready. And so today, um, I'm gonna take a little different approach. We're not gonna look at too much data. I have a few data points I want to talk about at the end, but I really want to kind of take a little walk down memory lane and then also talk about, um, the amazing things that have kind of happened and are going to transpire over, um, throughout the spring to kind of get Madison back to um, some of those traditions that we had going on before COVID and before we moved. So. So really quickly, just a couple of before, and oh, I changed about mine, but I didn't change it on here. I don't even know if I know how to use this. Sorry, you're gonna have to give me in.
Just forward or back?
Great, thanks. There we go. When I was putting this together, I came across the old entry of Madison School. And it, it was kind of like a wow moment. I knew what it looked like before. But it is really incredible to drive up to that school. And it feels so good to know that all of our students and staff have this amazing place to come and learn and work each day. And it really truly does give off the feeling that we very much care about the educational environments that our students are learning in. And so there's like this feeling of pride every morning for me at least to pull up there and know that there were so many amazing things happening in that school before it looked, you know, beautiful. But there really is a sense of our community cares about, about kids and the environment that they learn in. And so there, there is that sense of pride for sure. Also just feeling really thankful, I mean, the before and after of the classroom. We got a fresh coat of paint and new floors, which was much more than we had expected. And so that was really exciting. But the main thing is that we got to hold on to that classroom size. You know, a lot of our newer schools have smaller classrooms. And so really grateful to have such nice big classrooms for our kids to continue to learn in. Ooh, the library, also known as the Terry Jones Wing, is pretty incredible. So I just shared one of the only snapshots of the old library there on the left. But grabbed a couple of pictures of Terry reading actually this morning. And then kiddos in the morning had the opportunity to go into the library and hang out. So they were making use of that nice little corner there with their Legos. We are really excited to have received a $21,000 grant from the Oregon Department of Education. Gosh, I'm gonna forget the. Youth Development Division, thank you, which goes along with our garden. We have used that $21,000 to revitalize the garden and also provide opportunities this summer for staff to come in and open up the library. And the garden space along with the playground will be available during the summer lunch program. And so this was kind of a tradition that had started prior to COVID and prior to my experience working at Madison. But we are really looking forward to that. Terry, is there anything you want to say about that? I'm just kind of putting you on the spot. But we just talked about it at site council today.
It's, we've been doing it since I, 18 years I've been at Madison. And we started it, started out, it was actually funded through Driftwood Reading Council in the beginning. It was all volunteer. But of course, as a classified person, as Candace pointed out to me back then, I cannot volunteer in my job. So they said, well, they started using Title I money so that I could oversee it even when we had volunteers. And we just kept building on it every year. The year before COVID hit was probably one of our attendance wise, it was amazing. Whole families would come and they would just use the whole playground. They would come in and play board games in the library, pick things in the garden. And it was, it was really incredible. And so I'd like to get us back to that point.
Yeah, so really looking forward to seeing that, that startup again this summer, as well as working really hard to get our garden reestablished because it was completely demolished. They did save the greenhouse and our, our storage shed. But we have some little kindergartners along with other students throughout the school who are working on filling this garden with soil and getting our plants planted. And so I don't know how big our garden crop will be this summer. We'll see. But, but it is so exciting to see that coming back together. We also have some pigment tables that we purchased, so we'll use that space as like an outdoor classroom. If it ever starts raining, that will be an exciting thing to see. And then again, in the fall, it will be really great to use that as well. Okay. We had, recently had a really special guest visitor to Madison, Bob Dalton, who is the owner of Sackcloth and Ashes. He is also the author of Everyone is Someone. Reached out earlier in the school year and had asked about coming and doing a book and blanket drop at Madison School. And so he came in March and brought a copy of his book for every student. And we went through the, the entire school. I think maybe he had like a 20 minute little break to go eat some, eat some lunch really quick. But we knocked out 14 classrooms and he read his story to every classroom. And they all received a copy of his book. And it was just really a very heartwarming experience. It was very fun for him to have the opportunity to come back to Madison. And he was so just kind of impressed and shocked with the change, but very, very excited for, for the kiddos to see their new learning space. In addition, we've, we've had the opportunity to do some things. It felt like we would never make it through COVID and everyone was kind of working in these isolated classrooms. And so Sunset Buddy Readers came over during Read Across America Month, I guess, right before spring break. And their students buddied up with our classrooms and read to them. And that was really, really a great experience. And we're hoping to do that again in May, just trying to collaborate and build that campus wide culture. We're also looking forward to having our second graders head over and visit Sunset in, probably in June, end of May, June, to help smooth that transition to, to Sunset. All right, this is maybe one of the most exciting things that's happening. My, my recipe singing voice is not the feature of this next video. But morning music is a Madison tradition. And so Mallory Pennington took that on this year and got that started back up. So I just have a little 20 second video clip because it's pretty amazing to hear these kiddos sing. So every Friday morning, we march down to the gym and sing together. And it has been a fabulous way to build schoolwide culture and also just infuse music in our schools. We had hoped to be able to hire a music teacher. That was one of the job postings last spring for our schools. And it just, we just couldn't find anyone who wanted to do that job. So this, this has been one way that we've been able to kind of infuse music back in each week. So if anyone wants to come check out morning music, it's pretty awesome. Friday mornings about 8:05, head on in. This year, during our holiday program time, the teachers were all saying what a difference like morning music had made because the kids were used to singing and they'd been together in the gym. And we kind of brought them together like the day before they were going to be putting on their program. And they, they sang together in the gym. But this, I will be looking forward to next year when we have had this experience for those months leading up to the performance. And then we are hoping to do an end of year music performance for each grade level as well. There we go. I could not stand before you and not talk about Little Pirates. So I have one little slide to just share with you a few things about what's happening at Little Pirates. We currently have four classrooms, 72 students. Three classrooms or 54 of our students are preschool promise. And the other 18 are on a tuition based entry into the program. So we are going to be looking for new, a bunch of new Little Pirates because 40 of our 72 students will be headed off to kindergarten. So really, really excited to see the impact of those, those kiddos coming into kindergarten. We have noticed each year, I think Terry was talking about. Terry is pretty amazing because she goes and does a library for our Little Pirates. Last year, we invested in some library books that she could check out. So they get the experience of checking out books each week except for, she goes on Fridays. So they're going to be without it for three weeks now. She said this morning, she said, because we didn't have it last week and she's out of town this week. And next Friday, we don't have school either. So they're going to go a few weeks without checking out library books. But I'm putting you on the spot, Terry. Terry said a, something about Little Pirates this morning, just about how much progress the kiddos had made from last year to this year.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's so great to already know kids that are coming in. It's, it was amazing to start this year. Wait, I know someone, you know, and I think they feel that way as well. I'm sorry that they aren't in our building. We really loved sharing space with them last year. It was, it is amazing with the, the energy. They have a lot of energy. So anyway, I, I am appreciative that I still get to go visit them, even if no one else does.
Yes. Yeah, so they're, they're learning some really great skills. And I'm very excited to see how kindergarten teachers respond to school readiness skills as well as the academic skills that they're acquiring in the program. You know, we are still learning a lot. We grew very, very quickly. And so we went from this, you know, one little classroom with 18 kiddos to 72 very, very quickly. We, you know, were learning things. There are likely some things that we're going to have to bring to the policy committees because there are certain things about early learning that, yeah, a lot of things fit into K-12. But there, there are lots of opportunities for growth and learning as well. And so working with the, the staff on what are, what are our needs now that we are at a space where we have 72 kiddos? And how are we responding to challenges in, from transportation to social emotional needs? So, so excited about it, but there's still work to be done for us to kind of get to where we want to be. And then hopefully get to a place where we have an early learning center and, you know, could possibly have some space to add an additional, you know, one or two more classrooms. In the meantime, we are installing a playground back here, moving into these four classrooms in the back. I would say we, I went with the playground that's a little more simplistic in terms of the structure that's going on the ground. And there will be lots of movable toys and things that kiddos will have to play with outside. Just not knowing how long we will be here. If this will be a place that we will stay, then there's opportunity for growth and development on the playground. But for now, I'm trying to be really mindful of, of the resources that we are investing and investing in things that can be moved, should we need to do so. Let's see. One last thing I want to talk about, or actually probably two. I see a special guest that just walked in and it was perfect because I haven't talked about this yet. One of the things that we are working on at Madison, our space of, of the building, the garden, the gym, we feel so fortunate about our playground. We lost our swings during construction and there wasn't funding for us to get those back. And so we are currently without swings at Madison. We are launching some efforts to start to raise funds in order to get those swings back. And also kind of dreaming of this world where we have an ADA accessible playground. But with that comes a pretty hefty price tag. So working alongside a parent, a parent volunteer, Rebecca Rogowski, just walked in, who is helping to lead up some fundraising efforts and events. But she is one parent. We're looking into grants. And I'm going to let Rebecca talk briefly. You don't have to stand up or anything, Terry's been talking from her seat. So about our Jogathon that she, that she's working on organizing for June. So take it away, Rebecca.
Thanks for having me. Glad to meet you. Yeah, so I'm Rebecca Rogowski. I know some of y'all. But I've been working with Carly and some of the staff and just kind of what is our vision? And we have this beautiful, brand new-ish building, you know, that we just looked into and we're very grateful for it. It's a very welcoming, beautiful place. But as Carly started to mention, our playground is not where we want it to be. Starting with components we're used to having, like swings are missing. And then kind of the next step, looking at creating a playground where all students can play. As a background, I'm a sped teacher, so having like an accessible playground. Particularly maybe if one day the preschool gets to join us and we've got lots of different ages sharing a space. We would love to revamp the actual jungle gym structure. I think mainly Ms. Reed, but she's doing a great job, you know, making pop catch and shoot, I just forgot that ball game. Gaga ball and, you know, teaching the kids how to play the games that we have. You know, there's covered area. My second grader just got done telling me some of the games that you still didn't have to play in the covered area when it's pouring down rain, which is all lovely. But kind of one of the pipe dream, our big, beautiful goal is to actually rip out the field and put in turf. Don't know how many of you have been up to Madison recently, but you know, where a few blocks from the bay, we have a lot of rain. The drainage is subpar, at a more good chunk of the year. Our students cannot actually play on the field. I'm also a substitute teacher. I've been there multiple days. And I think I've been there one day when students could actually play on the field because it is such a muddy mess that it's not safe for kids to be flipping on that. It would trap in all sorts of nastiness into our brand new building. And so a lot of games that students want to play, you know, soccer, kickball, even just tag, there's not a space for students to just run freely. Ms. Reed's done a great job teaching students how to run laps if they just want to run or need a break from working, you know, with peers, doing something individual, which is great. The schools run over a thousand miles this year. Like they're doing a great job of that. That's a great alternative. But it doesn't take the place of team play. And using, I haven't done the actual math, but roughly that field's about half of our square footage. So we're kind of still working on what are the steps? How are we going to break this up? This is obviously going to be done in phases. The jungle gym itself to redo that is about $200,000 to rip out that field. When you have a quote, it's going to be about a million dollars to put turf in that area. And part of that is because it doesn't already have turf. So that initial step of putting in turf is very expensive. And then hopefully, you know, over the years, it's about half the size of the Marshville area. So, you know, to maintain it after we get it done, obviously that price tag will drop a little bit, or hopefully a lot of it. But y'all just got an invitation this afternoon, actually. June 2nd, we're doing the Jogathon. That will be kind of our first big fundraiser. We started reaching out for solicitations from local businesses, focusing first on getting some prizes lined up. Josh Brothers has been wonderful. They've already given us prizes for top runners in every single classroom and a top runner in every single classroom as a start. We're also hoping to do classroom prizes for the classes that run the most and raise the most. But as Carly mentioned, I am one parent. And being that we're only, I came through to school, it is very hard to get parent involvement because your students are constantly moving on and coming out with COVID, parents have been allowed in school. So it's hard. So I'm hoping some of you would be interested in volunteering as a, a body to, you know, tally kids or fill water cups and be there to show your support. Obviously, this is going to be a very long-term project with multiple stages along the way. But I think we're pretty dedicated and we're very hopeful of what that space could be, not just for our school, but for the greater community. So looking out, reaching out for grants, jungle gym workshop in a couple of weeks to learn how to write grants. Because I have no idea how. But I'm willing to learn if that's what it takes to kind of put our best foot forward. So, you know, on the weekends, maybe, you know, the soccer organizations, you know, can use it as well. Whatever will kind of help make that a gathering space, not just for Madison, but for Cusby as a whole. So we hope you guys support that and would like to get involved in it. And yeah, we've got big goals.
Really big dreams. But I do see, like, have this vision of a space where all of our families on the West Side have a place to go and play. And the idea that that would truly be a community space, as well as an opportunity for other community organizations with with sports, soccer, T-ball, all of those things that are hard to do sometimes when the ground you're running on is like a sponge. So so that's probably the, you know, in the phases of how we would do it, the field is probably the farthest out there, but also not something that, you know, we want to give up on. So we'll be working hard for that. And I think I've gone way too long, so thank you so much for your time. I know I didn't present a ton of academic data or attendance data. We definitely, attendance is a place where we are focusing these last nine weeks on really connecting with families through our family advocate and prioritizing students who and families who have had some barriers getting to school. It has been hard transitioning out of COVID and telling people to, "Don't come to school if you're sick, but why aren't you at school?" It's it's kind of that that balance that we're playing right now and trying to to support families through that. Because obviously, if their kids aren't at school, it makes it really difficult to learn. So I will leave you with that, but I really appreciate your time. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Does the, do you know if the Little Pirates preschool has a need for indoor play structure?
Potentially.
Okay, then, yeah, send me a quick email or something. I might have a line on something that would be available for a few years at least.
Yeah, we, I know at the Child Development Center at the Harding, they used her, they used one in the gym for a while. So that could be a potential benefit. So, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Carly. Now, let's see, next up, we have OSEA Business. Terry.
Hello, good evening. Barbara is soccer mombing currently right now. And, you know, that is a very worthwhile thing to have to do, so I'm filling in. Currently, Chapter Thirty-three is accepting nominations for our next year's board. We will have a new president next year. And since she's not here, I hope you join me in recognizing Barbara Green's impact and efforts this past year, not only in attending a lot of meetings, but also in helping to make improvements in working conditions and procedures that benefit not only our bargaining unit members, but also the programs and students that they work with. She has been fearless. She will still be helping our next year's board, but she will, she will not be running for president. So and we knew that going in. But she has, she's really been amazing, even at the state level, no matter what I have thrown at her. She just always says yes, and then my phone will beep and it'll be a text saying, "So what is it you want me to do?" It's been great. Lastly, as we look at life after Esser and those wonderful funds, I hope we identify what is working. Let's build on the successful practices that we have been able to try. I was here during the recession years and it was really ugly. And I don't want to do that again. So let's keep it positive forward as much as we can. I already have people, you Carly do too. I know Carly does because it was me earlier today. You know, people coming and saying, "What, you know, do I have my full hours? Do I have a job?" The panic already is kind of setting in. So let's just take it from a positive look. What is working, what can build on? And quickly make those decisions so that we can start making next year another best year ever.
Thank you, Terry. All right, next is CBDA Business, Becky Crane.
Good evening. I wanted to start with just saying, Carly, what a pleasure it was to see your presentation tonight. As a witness of the work you did for our bonds work, how many years ago? I don't know. But knowing what the, you know, what our big picture was at that point of building some community-based schools and and watching it, watching the success that you had already is makes me very proud to be part of this district. So very nice job. What have we been up to? We've had spring break. It was wonderful. We are now, it just, it feels like we're doing all those things that we to transition to the next year already. You know, we're going into state testing and we're starting to plan some field trips, end-of-the-year field trips and such. We have been bargaining, as you know. Thank you so much for your willingness or or tolerance of us changing our mind multiple times on what we should do with the April 4th bargaining date. But I think it worked in on both sides' favor to take that night off. And so we look forward to getting back to bargaining on April 18. We appreciated Karissa's mention of bargaining in her recent update to everyone, I suppose. The line that I liked the most was that our goal is to attract and retain licensed staff at all stages of their career, which I think is a shared goal on both sides. And so we'll see where we end up. One of the things that I am working on currently is, as you know, just you you mentioned that this is Barb's last year and she has also been a pleasure to work with. Also, my last year, as you know, as president. And Jeremy Berger will be our president next year because our bargaining chair currently. So many of you have worked with him already. But one of the things that I've been thinking about is, you know, how to how to pass the baton and how to teach him all the things that I've learned and so on. And one of the things is that's coming to question is what we report when we come here in front of you. And I honestly have never really known. You know, I think I've grown up a bit in my ability to stand in front of a microphone, first of all. But I still, it's still questionable how we get you the information you want and whether we do or not. I don't know. In a public setting like this is one thing. I don't know if if there's benefit to having more conversations than the one visit we have per month. I just thought I'd bring that up, you know, when I come in front of the board is what I meant by that. I just thought I'd bring that up because maybe you could be thinking about it. And as we start with somebody new next year, if we want to make any change. If you have any specific requests of what, how he reports out, what we share when we come here, it'd be a good time to talk about that. So maybe just think about that and reach out if you have any thoughts. So the rest of the year, we have a lot of stuff coming up. So I want to, you should have seen, just last night, I sent out an invitation to our education celebration. And I also saw that you're going to talk about Teacher Appreciation Week coming up, the week of May 8th through 12th. So its celebration will be right in the middle of that week on May 10th. And last year I invited you, but I think I invited you like the day before or something like that. So hopefully with some notice, we'll see some of you there. Come eat cake with us and we're going to celebrate our retirees. We have a couple and probationary graduates. We like to congratulate them for making it through their first three years and sticking with us in Cusby Schools. And, oh, an extra mile work, people. We nominate our coworkers for going an extra mile. I know sixth grade at Sunset, just this is a shift, a new topic, but some things that have been happening. After-school at Sunset just currently got over last week. I haven't heard how it went. I do know that the night before they, oh, you went. Oh, I went the night before they changed locations. That could not have been fun. I am on the sixth grade team at Melocoma. We're getting ready to go to our outdoor school in May. So looking forward to it. We've been hearing of staffing changes in schools, I think, you know, just getting ready for next year. There's some people going out, some people shifting. So it's kind of getting exciting. Melocoma is getting ready to go to Blossom for a year of construction, which I can't be excited about. But I know a lot of that is due for us, so we can't complain. Next week, wait, next week, we have conferences coming in the next couple of weeks for everyone. So, yeah, the end is near. It happens, it happens quickly. And we hope to see some of you in our schools for some of our fun events. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Now, let's see, next on the agenda is report from the business office. I don't see Candace here. Is anybody else slated to?
So Candace is not here. She sent me the report. I will attempt to be Candace. My brain doesn't work that way. She said everything is as it should be at this time in the school year. And if you have any follow-up questions, she is available via email.
We can ask you all the questions about specific.
You can ask us.
Thank you, David. So now we've got our superintendent update.
Put my glasses on so I can see my head. So, good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a wonderful, relaxing spring break. So we've been back for over a week. And I know we're in the last big push of the year, kind of our bell lap. Can't believe the year has gone by so quickly. This is the last big push for learning. We have assessments going on. There's a lot going on, especially I want to put a note in. I want to make sure every senior out there has checked in with their advisors and their counselors to get every kid walking across that stage in June. Big priority right now. I know I'm so impressed with the work of the graduation coaches and the team at both Destinations and Marshfield High School around all they're doing. I got to go in and observe some of the coaching conferences they're having with students right now to make sure that they're going to get every one of those last credits so we get them successfully launched and and ready for life after high school. So for my update, first of all, I want to thank everyone. We turned in our Integrated Guidance Plan, ODE. We successfully developed a four-year strategic plan in a very short timeline. Was very aggressive to be able to do such a comprehensive community engagement process and a collaborative process to develop that a very short timeline. So I want to thank everybody for participating and collaborating and helping come up with that plan. Now we're shifting to the implementation planning. So we're going to have all kinds of the work groups with staff helping us develop the more detailed implementation planning. We still have to work with ODE. We're waiting, we've submitted it. There's still a grant finalization process we go through in the next two months, which includes, they have quality assurance learning panels that are going to review our proposal. There's a fourteen-page rubric. They'll be analyzing our plan. We need to negotiate the longitudinal performance growth targets to set our growth goals on those five required outcome measures. So Chad and I will still be busy negotiating all of that. And we'll bring back the final grant agreement to the board. Hopefully in June, we'll get all of that finalized. So there's still more to do, but the biggest and the most important piece is coming up with our shared vision of where we want to go as a district and what we're working on. So the primary focus now at the central office, and it's come up in the comments we've heard earlier, is really looking at budget. It's budget season. We have the districts, you know, the board's budget committee coming up. So, you know, that's the big picture. We're working on the development of our budget plan. But again, as has already been mentioned, we have two extremely important components of that budget process that we're also working on simultaneously. One is the bargaining with our licensed employee unit. You know, our largest area of our budget is staffing and that's the largest area of our staffing is our licensed unit, critically important. I'm hoping we're we're nearing a resolution. I sincerely hope that, hope that the district has put an offer on the table that really meets the goal of keeping us as a highly competitive district in the region in terms of compensation. And hopefully will help us both attract and retain, as Becky mentioned, staff at all stages of their career. So what the offer on their, on the table we currently have includes an overall fifteen-point-five percent totally total salary increase over the next two years for staff who are eligible for higher steps. And then staff who are at the top step, it would be a nine-point-five percent raise and also an additional fifty dollars in health insurance increase each year. What this does is to give you an example around the competitiveness. For teachers, most of our teachers have master's degree. That's the most, the column in our salary schedule with the most licensed staff. It puts us, our starting salaries, very competitive with the highest compensation, comparable to the highest compensated starting salaries for master's degree teachers in our region, not just teachers, but our licensed, all licensed staff. And then at the top end of our table, we have additional steps. So our most veteran licensed staff make almost $5,000 more than the top steps in our, in our region. So we're very competitive, both at attracting and also retaining and being able to attract, attract and recruit veteran teachers to our district because of our competitive compensation. Again, with the other big budget issue I mentioned too, it's looking at the reduction plan. And at the last meeting at the board, the board approved, you know, implementing our board policy around reduction planning. So we started that process. Again, I want staff input. What are the priorities around looking at? We're having to reduce our general fund budget by just over $2 million. Again, I don't mean it to cause panic amongst staff, but it's scary. It's scary. Those of us old enough, have been around long enough, we've, we saw what happened after the last recession. We still haven't recovered. And it's not like our budget has any fat in it as it is. I mean, when we talk about reductions, we're talking about, there's no fat to trim. We're talking about making really difficult, hard decisions around very important work the district is doing. And I'm proud of how efficient and lean and mean we are. So these are difficult, but I do want to kind of, I hope my message, I was trying, I wrote a lot in that newsletter, but I was really trying to explain. At the end of the day, I'm hoping to ratchet down some of the panic this is causing because we're really prioritizing identifying additional funding opportunities. Like, for example, the legislature is looking at passing an early literacy bill right now, moving ahead. That can help offset, help us support our K-through-three programming on early literacy, help support the work that we're already doing with implementing the science of reading and the Amplify curriculum and getting teacher supports, coaching and professional development and supports for that effort. So we're looking at hoping additional funding sources are going to come in through the legislative process. And we want to prioritize protecting. are going to come in through the legislative process. Um, and we want to prioritize protecting staff and resources that directly support students. And we, we really want to prioritize, um, um, if we have to reduce any staff, it'll be through attrition. To really try not to, um, have to riff anybody, send out those reduction enforces. So we're really trying, I'm hoping to ratchet down. And I also put in there, if you do the analysis of that two million dollars, what that equates to for next year, we're looking at about a two percent cut in our general operating fund. And then the year after would be a two point seven percent cut. So yes, I don't want to be cutting. I'll speak for myself. I would, I want to be adding two percent. I mean, I don't want to be making these cuts. However, um, two percent and two point seven percent, yes, we're going to feel it, but I don't think we need to, you know, people need to, I hope not losing sleep out there about not retaining their positions because that's, we're really, I'm, I think, going to prioritize in our plan, not, not trying to do that. Um, so that's kind of my overall, what's going on. So budget, we were, I was really in strategic planning mode and now really shifting and going deep. And we'll be working with the employee groups. Um, we have meetings set up with C B E A. I've already talked to Barbara Green, meeting with them about this reduction plan and hope the goal is that I will bring back a draft plan for your consideration next month because we've got to get this in the district's budget process. So again, we're on another tight timeline, doing all of this very quickly. Um, I just, again, I mentioned a little bit what's going on in Salem. That's the other big unknown variable besides bargaining, besides budget reduction. We don't know how much money we have coming next year. So it's a really bizarre system where we have to do the budgeting and yet the state isn't telling us how much money we have yet. So right now where we're at, um, initially, um, the state came out with the current service level budget at nine point five billion. Um, our S- uh, OASBO, our state group, the Oregon Association of School Business Officers, estimates that eight hundred million dollars short of what our current service level truly is. Now, the governor's budget and the co-chairs of the Ways and Means, they have both come out with a nine point nine, um, billion dollar budget, which is four hundred million. It's about halfway to the current service level. So the proposal we put onto the table for C B E A for the bargaining is estimated what we can do with nine point nine billion. And the idea being if we come in with any additional money from the state school fund, it can help offset that two million dollar in cuts we're looking at. Um, so we're not going to know until June as usual. Um, we, there are, again, as I mentioned, some major pieces of education, um, legislation that we're following. And so once that gets pol- um, um, passed, uh, you know, we'll be watching it, monitoring it. Some big things, again, uh, the early literacy bill, I'm hoping would bring some additional resources to help, just like the idea behind it is like the high school success fund had targeted funds for grades eight through twelve. This would be targeted funds, K through three to support literacy. So that would be exciting if we could get that extra money to support all of our reading initiatives that, that we have because it's such a priority for us. Um, there's, you know, a, 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 set a bill ten forty-five, which is a new accountability bill. And it's based on, um, an audit the state did, wanting increased transparency for school districts. And it's kind of a hodgepodge of increased reporting responsibilities for districts and increased compliance for districts to state laws. So that one is, that'll hit the central office and our, and, and school boards around. The state wants to make sure that school boards and school districts are complying with state laws and providing a lot more reports and data. So that'll be coming our way most likely. Governor, this is a priority for the governor. So as we learn more, they're, they're hashing out, finding out the details right now, but it's a hodgepodge. Everything from the curriculum adoption process changes to, um, trying to think what else was in there. There were a whole host of things, um, about data we're reporting, about school boards having to implement and penalizing districts if the school boards do not implement state laws, particularly around protecting underserved students. Um, there's just a, it's a, it's a real mismatch, a, a mashup of different rules and requirements. So once that gets finalized, if we know what it is, we'll bring it back to the board because it's going to hit us in our decision-making and policies and recordings coming. Um, next week on a different track, couple, just a couple of other things, kindergarten, kindergarten registration is starting. So if you know anyone, kinder age, um, let's get them registered so we can start our planning, um, um, even better, even stronger, the more we know, we can get these families connected to our families. Um, we are working on an online registration process. So this year it'll be online and paper. We're trying to, um, migrate. Our goal is next year to go primarily all online for consistency, ease, efficiency, even have like Chromebooks or computers set up in offices so parents can come in and register online, but get assistance if they need it. So to try to streamline that. But I would like to thank, um, Carly and Kara and David and Shelley Fuller, all these people really working hard to get that kindergarten registration stuff. So get the word out, sign up your kinders. We want them to come. We'll talk about our inter-district transfer numbers later. So let's start getting, I'm hoping one of the, um, positive side effects of Little Pirates preschool is we'll keep more of those kiddos here. Um, and then April is an important, a very important, and in May coming up before the next board meeting, we have some very important appreciation of those coming up. And I know the board, the next agenda item is our licensed employee appreciation proclamation, but I want to say a special thank you to all of our licensed staff. They are really the, um, backbone of all that we do in meeting the incredible needs, um, you know, providing incredible supports for our unique students and all of their needs. And they do go above and beyond. So deep appreciation and thank you. Um, also, April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. I think it's critically important. Um, you know, that this is, child abuse is a pervasive and serious issue affecting children in our community. Um, COVID has had a very difficult impact on child abuse because the reporting went way down because students weren't coming to school. And our school staff are mandatory reporters. They are on the front lines of keeping our children safe. And when the students weren't coming to school, it wasn't, I don't believe that abuse and neglect went down. It was because no one was reported on it. So I want to applaud our school staff and all that we do to keep our children safe. Um, and again, um, we're going to continue. We have great partnerships in the community, Adrian, around preventing child abuse and supporting, um, families and helping support them to, um, make sure that our children, as we say, each student is thriving. All of our children are thriving here in the district. And we want to continue to partner with, uh, Department of Human Services and all the wonderful nonprofits that are working in our community to, um, prevent and reduce child abuse. Uh, and finally, Terry, April is School Library Month. Yay! Um, and I want to thank our amazing staff and our libraries. Um, we are fortunate to have a library at each campus and the library staff make reading fun and exciting. You go into Madison's library. I was there on Wednesday. I spent the day at Madison. It was, refilled my bucket. What a great day. It's been a great, in the library, such a welcoming place that encourages literacy and learning and a love of learning and really opening doors for students, uh, to see the world and to inspire their imaginations and help them learn to read. So, um, I want to thank all the library staff for all you do for our schools. That's my report.
All right. Any questions, Mr. Pam, for Terrence? All right, thank you. Uh, and you know, as, again, if you know anybody who's got kinder age children, um, that's always a big unknown for our district and it affects our, our budgeting and our staffing plans. So the more, the more we know, sooner the better. Um, so thank you for your chair. Yeah, I'm going to make this meeting a bit really long just to remember that next time there's, there's Terry. So next up, we've got our board items. The first is our licensed appreciation proclamation. Um, so let me read this out. It's not terribly long. Um, so whereas licensed employees mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas licensed employees encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas licensed employees spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, providing services, counseling and coaching students and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its licensed employees in educating the children of this community, now therefore be it resolved that the Coos Bay School District Number Nine Board of Directors proclaims May first through fifth, twenty twenty-three to be Licensed Employee Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that the Coos Bay School District Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our licensed employees, their dedication and devotion to their work. So thank you, everybody. And hopefully we'll be able to see you sometime in May and deliver some goodies to you as well. Uh, and then just lost my place in the agenda. Here we go.
I'm, I'm just trying to confirm the dates because what are the dates? Becky, you have different dates that were the proclamation. I want to make sure.
Eight through twelve.
It's eight through twelve. Yeah, we just need to shift the date.
Then we need to amend our declaration to make it May eight through twelve. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I, I caught that. I was taking good notes.
All right. Uh, so next up, our board member highlights. Uh, if you've got anything you'd like to share, things you've done since we last met?
Uh, so I spent Saturday, um, on the track field. Uh, it was the pre-quantum invitational. Six hundred athletes, more than twenty-five teams, don't quote me on that number, but more than, about six hundred athletes. Um, it's a big event. Um, well, tons of volunteers. I'd like to give kudos to Chad and the huge volunteer crew that makes, um, that bigger production go smoothly. Um, five and a half hours. So we didn't even have to turn on the lights. It was lovely. Uh, uh, kudos to all the volunteers, kudos to the rotarians who, uh, kind of put it on with, uh, uh, with us and, um, tons of rotarian volunteers. Um, yeah, it was a great event and a beautiful sunny day.
I don't remember that. Was there sun?
Oh, I knew it. There was like a tiny window. I mean, literally from six AM until the end of the meeting.
All right. Anyone else?
Um, let's see. Well, I, um, again, due to our lack of chair and board chair, or chair and vice chair this last week, I did an interview, uh, for the Marshfield, um, publication that students do for journalism, um, interviewing about school nurses. Uh, and that's something that has been coming out recently and, and bargaining as well. And I'm sure questions about our, our nurse staffing and the state of what that is. Uh, and then also just a reminder, if you haven't done so already, um, the new requirement for board members to fill out a statement of economic interest for government ethics commission is due by April fifteenth. So if you haven't done so, it only takes five, 10 minutes. Um, there are some.
Depending how much money you have.
It's one day. It depends on how, how your, uh, concern find with the school district, right? There, there are some, if there are some videos online, you can watch the, play the whole process and answer a lot of questions.
Um, and then finally, uh, I was able to participate in the, uh, Uicon of the North Bend Public Library. Uh, unfortunately, nobody showed up to compete, but, uh, myself and the high school robotics group were able to give some demonstrations to a couple of families that came in, um, demonstrated the robots, let some kids practice driving. So it was, it was a lot of fun.
Um, all right. So I guess I'm up again, policy committee. We've got a couple of first readings on here. Uh, and I always hate going over this policy because then my head itches continuously. Uh, we've got two policies for, oh, a policy and an A R for headlights. And those are, those are being modified, uh, basically because the, the previous policy referenced, um, uh, online publications that are no longer online. So they're being updated to point to, uh, the latest guidance uh, for dealing with, with students and families with headlights and the A R that goes with that. Um, there are also some inclusions on things that the district is not able to do, um, in, in terms of, uh, for example, it's not a, um, condition for which you can exclude people from the classroom. And so there are a couple of other things listed in that, in that, um, guideline as well. Uh, so take a good cruise through that and you'll see that, uh, for a clear water in next meeting.
Because I asked, uh, so headlights is pediculosis.
Ridiculous.
This would, pediculosis usually foot, yet it's head. I have no idea.
Agreed. I, I know more than I care to admit about headlights. From, um, researching this policy and from personal experience. Um, but you have that, that analogy of the word. I have no idea.
Chad, who can see it.
Oh, okay. All right. Which brings us to action items. And the one item we have is a recommendation for inter-district transfer numbers for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
So this is an annual requirement that by May first, the board adopt the inter-district transfer numbers for the next year. Um, here is what I am recommending, a slight, slight, um, change from last year. Um, last year it was thirty students per core class area. Having done an analysis of the inter-district transfer numbers on the back page, because I'm the one that signs them, so I've been seeing them. So I, I, I noticed that a lot more students I was signing were leaving the district than coming in. So we just, I'm recommending that we change it, not that we're close, but I don't want any limits on our ability to accept high school level students. So I changed it instead of per course area to per grade level. Um, you'll see in the back page, there's a table. Um, the top table is the number of students who are transferring out. Um, it's on the very last page of the packet. Turn it over. You'll see all in total this year alone. So this is just for the current school year. Now, again, obviously over time, we have a lot more transfer students in and out aggregate, day through twelve. But for the, this current school year, so far, we've had a hundred and fifty-eight students transfer out. And you can see it, it broken down primarily to North Bend. And then, um, at the high school level, uh, we're looking at Winter Lake. That's a lot. And then the bottom table is the transfers into the district. So this is how many students are receiving. You'll see all total, we a hundred and fifty-eight students have transferred out, eighty-five have transferred in. So, um, I want to make sure, um, with that, when I say that thirty per grade level, um, we want to change this and we don't want to be losing this many students. We want to be retaining our students and making this the destination district. So I want, uh, one of our goals to look at is turning these numbers around. So I want to make sure that we have capacity at the high school level to increase enrollment when these families, um, start transferring in. So that's a slight change, but after the analysis, that's what I'm recommending.
And the rest of the numbers were the same from last year?
Yeah, everything else is the same from last year. The only change is the high school. And you can see that's when most of the, the biggest number of students are transferring out is at the high school level. Because that's where we see the most movement. So I wanted to make sure the board has numbers that allows us the most flexi, more flexibility at the high school level.
Yeah, and I can, I remember from the last time that we made a significant change in these numbers, you know, we we did so with the goal of prioritizing, keeping our classroom our classroom numbers as low as possible. So that's, that's where those were set, just to make sure that we don't just accept a lot of kids coming in from elsewhere and then finding our classroom sizes and putting that version on our, on our staff. So it's real interesting what kind of the data coming in and out.
Well, we're losing almost twice as many at the high school level. So I'm not as concerned. If those students were there, we'd have twice as many students. So the the class size should be higher if we kept all of our students. I want that problem. And because we get, we cover that A D M W, our state school fund goes up, we can then hire more teachers to, for the class sizes, if we capture those students.
So I would entertain a motion on inter-district transfer number.
I move that we accept the inter-district transfer numbers for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. K one at twenty-four, two to three at twenty-five students, fourth and fifth at twenty-six, six and seven at twenty-seven and thirty students for grade level for eight.
And any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. So we've got future agenda items, if there's something that anybody would like to propose to put on the agenda for our next meeting. I'd say forever hold your peace, but there's always ways to get stuff on the agenda. All right. So hearing nothing, we are done with our agenda here and. Our adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, that's right.